Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, April 13, 2017. Councilmember Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
As far as it is, let's pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our country. Most of all, we ask you to bless us to make quality decisions for our city here today. We ask you to bless our country in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
My pledge is...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, councilmembers, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Any questions on the consent agenda?
No questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the April 6, 2017 special meeting and the April 6, 2017 special meeting for public comment in front of you. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Hearing done, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We're going to defer item three under second readings. We'll move to new business and consider recommendations of the Chief of Police regarding additional allocation for a sex offender coordinator. Mr. Chief.
Mr. Chief.
There's a story behind that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I have Detective Jennifer West with me tonight. We're here in front of you seeking approval for the additional position for a sex offender coordinator. Currently, right now, we, our detective Jennifer, she does this part-time with the Sex Offender Registry. And with the number of sex offenders that are in here, the paperwork is cumbersome and also with the additional visitors that we have, a lot of our time's taken up doing paperwork. The additional position would allow us to, for Jennifer to get out in the field and do site visits in the home. Currently, there's roughly about 60 sex offenders that are within our jurisdiction and we have another 30 or 40 that comes through Murfreesboro on an annual basis. Jennifer does a great job in doing her duties, but she also has other responsibilities too by creating this position and allow her out in the field more. I have her here if you have any further questions in regards to this.
Any questions for the chief? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
No questions, I'll make a move for, motion for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Assistant Planning Director to schedule public hearings for rezoning along Kings Highway and Bridge Avenue from RD to LI, Victory Station, PUD amendments, zoning ordinance amendments. Mr. Bonnly.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Staff would recommend May 25th, public hearings for all three items. All of these three items were handled by the Planning Commission in one night. The meeting was relatively, relatively short.
Mayor, council, we can look at the 18th as an option as well. I think there was one conflict I was just made aware of.
Mr. Lance, I see, I see, what was that?
Leave on the 20th.
Okay.
What day?
I think the suggestion is Thursday, May 18th.
It's fine with me.
Should be good. I'll make a motion that we set them for May 18th.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the Assistant Planning Director regarding Resolutions 17R-07 and 17R-08.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. As all of you know, we just had our work session meeting or our special meeting regarding the North Highland Avenue Planning Study and the Historic Bottoms Planning Study. As we went over, there has been a, just a wealth of public participation in these two studies. So this has really truly been a collaborative effort. We're excited about the possibilities for our downtown and for the areas adjacent to downtown. And the Planning Commission formally adopted both of these studies at its March 22nd meeting after having public hearings on both studies. The public hearings were, were, there was public participation during the public hearings and I don't think that I would be too far from the truth in saying that most of the participation during those two public hearings was, was very positive in nature. And so we were glad to see the comments in the, during the Planning Commission's public hearing be so, be so positive about the two studies. The state law gives the Planning Commission the authority to adopt the two studies. However, many of the recommendations of the studies will have great bearing on decisions that the City Council will make, whether that's with regards to capital expenditures for infrastructure, parks and open space, road projects, or whether that's with regards to land use decisions. And so we are bringing the two resolutions to you tonight. One in support and acknowledgement of the North Highland Avenue Planning Study and one in support and acknowledgement of the Historic Bottoms Planning Study. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Donald Anthony of our planning staff is here if you have any questions for him, as is Gary Whitaker, our Planning Director, and Mr. Randy Caldwell with Reagan Smith and Associates, who was the, the planning consultant on both of these projects and who, I did want to mention that, that city staff enjoyed a great working relationship with Randy and his team during these, during these, these two plans, the studies. And we were thrilled with all of the, with the efforts they went to and the extent, the lengths that they went to to get public feedback and they were just consummate professionals during the whole process. And I'd also like to thank the, the members of the steering committees too. We had two steering committees appointed by the mayor and council during this process. They made, both steering committees made recommendations of support to the Planning Commission for both of these studies. And so we're truly thankful for the, for the time and effort that the members of the steering committees put into these studies. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Bonnly, I want to commend you and staff, Mr. Caldwell, the groups that the council put together for not only the bottom study, but for the North Highland Study, for the work that they put in, the meetings and additional meetings that we had to get public input. Some of the cool things like the storyboards where people came up and signed different things on there on what they would like to see. So I think it was a true community process where we were seeking the input with the community and, and the plans, I think, showed that interaction. So I really want to let staff know how good of a job that y'all did on, on keeping all this moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland.
I want to make a comment as well that not only to commend all those that participated in it, but you know, this process is not just learning about these two particular areas of our, of our community and envisioning what they might become. I think we, as a city, learned better how to, how to gather public input for a process. It was as good a process as I've ever seen of gathering public input. So often, these sometimes become, we have an idea and we want to convince you that this is the idea that we want to, want to do. And, but this process did not do that. It, it engaged people. It helped people imagine what might be possible in these areas. And I think we learned a great deal as far as process, as much as what function will be. But I would also say that while there's a lot of hard work behind these plans and these documents that were prepared, the real difficult work is in front of us. And we, as a community, have to commit ourselves not to just, you know, the pages that are before us, but the work to make something profound happen in each of these areas. And we want to engage anybody that has, continues to dream and flesh out what's in these, in these documents, to continue to be engaged because, like I say, it's going to be exciting to see. The table is set for some good things to happen, but we have to flesh them out. And I think this gives us that parameters, it gives us a document to kind of refer to as we go forward, but the hard work is in front of us.
Mr. Shacklet, I couldn't agree more. And, and one of the things that, that occurred to me, just myself as a planner, Mr. Smotherman mentioned the development scenarios that were in the books. And those development scenarios challenge you to think outside the box. And whereas, you know, for years, I've driven by the Historic Bottoms area and seen a bunch of aging metal industrial buildings or, you know, driven, you know, through Highland Terrace and seen, you know, medical office buildings that, that were, you know, some of, some of which were vacant. And it's, you know, until you really get into the nitty-gritty of it, sometimes it's hard to see what could be. And I think these development scenarios show us what could be and it's exciting to know some of those, some of those possibilities. And so we definitely want to keep the, keep the train rolling on this.
Keep momentum going. I move we adopt the two studies before us. Okay, so we've got Resolution 17R-07, which is the Bottoms Planning Study. Can we get a... I move that. All right, motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Same.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And we now have Resolution 17R-08 for the North Highland Avenue Planning Study. Move for its adoption.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Same.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Engineer. We have a design contract for Burtonob Road.
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland. Members of council, I have three items for you tonight. The first item we'll start with is design contract for Burtonob Road. I have a vicinity map on the screen and shows the location. Timing of our agenda should have been a little better. I probably should have followed the Parks and Rec Department on this, but if you'll tolerate it, we'll, we'll discuss these now. But we have a design contract to complete a design for Burtonob Road along the property that was purchased in September for a city park. It's about 3,000 linear feet of frontage on Burtonob Road. And so we've envisioned a project that would extend Burtonob Road from its just west of Veterans Parkway along the proposed park property to the intersection of Blackman Road. And if you'll recall, when we reviewed the zoning for Shelton Springs, now called Shelton Square to the north, we discussed the inadequacies of this intersection. And at that time, staff committed to bringing a, a design contract and proposal to help address that. Subsequently, a decision was made by mayor and council to, to purchase this property for the park. And so now we've combined those two projects together into one design. And, and so I'd ask tonight that you would approve the contract with Huddleston Steel in amount of $180,000 budget with proceeds of loans to repay that. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about the design contract we have tonight.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You now have an Engineering and Environmental Services for West Park?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so our second item tonight is Engineering and Environmental Services. We met with the design team and Parks and Rec staff and we decided we needed to get out the gate and get some engineering services procured. Met with Griggs Maloney and a subconsultant TTL for these engineering services for environmental due diligence. Task two is a carst inventory. Task three, a geotechnical investigation. And task four is irrigation system test well. The pricing is listed there. And I'd ask that you approve this contract tonight with not to exceed budgets of $168,000 to be paid from, from our loan proceeds and authorize the mayor to execute those proposals on behalf of the city. Be glad to answer any questions.
There's no questions, I'll move for approval on that one.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You now have the design contract for Pearlino Drive Bridge.
Thank you, Mayor. And our third item tonight is the design contract for the Pearlino Drive Bridge. We, in the 2000 Blackman Land use study, recommendations for additional east-west connectivity were, were highlights of the transportation section of that report. And they identified multiple locations along Puckett Creek and overall creek. This particular vicinity was one of those. We were approached in 2003 by Old South Properties to rezone and adopt a new master plan for the Evergreen Farms Development, including a bridge over Puckett Creek at Pearlino Drive. I have that on our map. Pearlino Drive connects to St. Andrews Drive and a bridge across Puckett Creek here would allow connectivity through Hickon and Country Park back to St., to Rucker Lane. Additionally, the master plan for Evergreen Farms shows good north-south connectivity to the south into existing and proposed developments to the south. The developer approached the city about moving ahead more quickly on this project and offered a joint funding agreement for the bridge, design and construction. And so tonight, we bring to you a design contract and proposed development agreement that would jointly share in the cost 50/50 between the city of Murfreesboro and Old South. And the design contract then would, would be also executed tonight in an amount of $113,000 with the city's portion to be paid from 2016 loan proceeds. The benefit of this bridge would, would allow it to be available to our citizens sooner and without, with the connecting roadways being constructed by Old South and their development of Evergreen Farms, we think it's a, a good deal to get this bridge in service sooner rather than later. And so I'd recommend that we approve the design contract and development agreement subject to the review of city attorney and city manager and authorize the mayor to execute the same once those are approved. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director, the master plan for the West Park Development.
Good evening, thank you for having me. When we met last in February in our joint meeting with this council and with the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission, Kim Lee Horn presented to us three conceptual designs for the West Park on Burtonob Road. The plans were based on extensive public input and an internal needs assessment. Since that time, we've met again with Park Commission for further feedback and staff has been working with Kim Lee Horn to consolidate all of those comments and move and merge those into a fourth conceptual design. As we discussed with this group at our March workshop, there has been a perception that we had to choose in this park between developing a regional athletic complex and developing a, a community park. And instead, we feel very confident that we have both in this design. The design, which, I'll try to pull up for you, you have seen before in our recent workshop. It has 13 baseball softball fields, two multi-use grass fields, four hard surface multi-use courts, event space, walking trails, an interactive water feature and splash pad playgrounds, and seven picnic shelters. As we move forward in this process, we'll of course be making adjustments. City staff is working now on the acquisition for an easement or, or an acquisition or easement for the entrance in from Veterans Parkway as well as the northeast corner cutout site. I'm here tonight to seek your approval in the proposed master plan concept and welcome your questions or comments.
Any questions?
There's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now have an agreement to consider with ETS for credit card and debit card services.
Thank you. One of our key stated goals with Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department is to utilize technology to improve efficiency throughout our department, improving availability of our online information and interaction with our services to our customers, increasing and improving options for payment through credit cards. And this that we're bringing to you tonight is a key step in that initiative. It's an agreement with ETS and serves as a gateway and processor for all of our facilities. It has been determined that ETS is a sole source provider because of how it interacts with our, with Vermont Systems, which is our point-of-sale software that we use in all of our Parks and Recreation facilities. ETS is also currently being used successfully at Old Fort Golf. And so we are looking forward to making these improvements as we work to serve our customers. One thing that we're really excited about this company, they're going to facilitate an absorbed fee. This will allow us to offer best, our, it will allow us to offer best practices in customer services, offering consistent pricing to customers that are paying with cash, check, credit or debit cards. It's an improvement from previous services that have been used on a limited basis that require point-of-sale additional fees to customers paying with credit or debit cards. Our recommendation before you, there's some breakdown of what we will need to do for our software and maintenance, as well as the transaction fee of 2.5% of all card transactions. Recommended that we enter this agreement for a gateway and processor for credit and debit card transactions with all of our facilities.
No questions, I move we approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Item C, adjustment to the budget for the Miracle Fields Project A&E Services.
We are moving on to the homestretch here with the completion of the Miracle Field. Loson Associates was designed, was contracted to design and manage this project, which you know has grown significantly in scope with the additional, with the addition of the accessible playground and a lot of other wonderful amenities. With the support of the fundraising efforts from Project 1-4, the project construction budget has increased. And likewise, before you tonight, to ask for a design and management increase reflective of that. Loson Associates' original agreement was 155,200. Their attached revised agreement is 196,000. This flea is, this fee is reflective of a cap and reflective of a stated discount of $35,500. We look forward to welcoming, welcoming you to the Miracle Field on May 6th and be happy to answer any questions regarding this request before you tonight.
What time on May 6th?
At noon is when we're welcoming the public for our grand opening celebration, the Miracle Field at McKnight Park. Really looking forward to it.
Say that one more time. What time?
At noon on May 6th.
Okay. Okay.
Did the scope of the business change by 20% or so?
It did, it did increase significantly, yes. The construction costs of the original estimates were 2.1 million. It has grown to approximately 3.2.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have three board and commission reappointments tonight. Mr. James Butch Jones, Mr. George Huddleston of the Airport Commission. I think Mr. Shacklet, you serve on that commission?
Sure do.
You have the Murfreesboro Housing Authority with Mr. Edward E. Miller Jr., the Cable DV Commission with a reappointment of Mr. Ronald Lindsay and Mr. Brian Patterson.
Motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. It looks like we have two beer permits.
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have a special event application from St. Thomas Rutherford Foundation for their annual Wine Around the Square event to be held on September the 16th, as well as another event to raise funds for the uninsured. That one is going to be November the 6th of this year. That application is in order and we recommend approval. The other application is from a restaurant that is changing names and ownership at 2458 Old Fort Parkway. That application meets our specifications for the background check. They still need to finish their building codes inspections. So if you approve that, we will hold off issuing that permit until they have met those inspections.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one bill in front of you.
Fueling an airplane's a good thing. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have one bill in front of you.
Fueling an airplane's a good thing. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Other business from staff or city council, I have one item. I think some councilmembers have some other things. Have been meeting with staff and have seen some opportunities for improvement on some of our vacant lots and really on different things that have been happening in the city. We've talked about this at a retreat, but would like the city to consider a moratorium the city to consider a moratorium effective immediately on the processing of submittal for a motive, for a motor vehicle sales use, whether a new use, a chance use, or an expansion or, or extension of existing use.
Is that a motion?
I can't make one, but.
I'll make a motion. So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Schreit, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business to come?
Uh, Mayor, if I may, this evening, on the first item on the agenda was, on the consent agenda, was an acknowledgement of the Planning Commission's amendments to the subdivision regulation, the street specs. A representative of Crown Castle, which is one of the companies that is working with the city at this time with regard to some small cell installations, has some objections to that. I've talked briefly with their representative earlier this evening. He knows that it's been passed, and he knows it's not a public hearing for him to speak. They had prepared a letter that they wanted to submit, and, of course, I don't, at this point, have any response to it, other than to say that we believe that the regulations we proposed are, are valid and are, are acceptable. But, I agree that I would put, let his letter be provided to each of you, and that we would put a copy of it in the minutes that submitted, as a submission by an interested party. So, I would circulate, I think, these to you, and I will provide a copy to Ms. Machado for the, for the minutes. And this is from the representative of Crown Castle.
Thank you, Ms. Schrafts.
Mayor.
Pardon?
Ping pong back and forth. Well, I also have another item. And, we're done with that one, right?
I'm sorry.
Did you have more on that? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Did you have any more?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That, yes, that's all.
Okay. Yesterday, I emailed you the, a copy of the release and termination of a right to repurchase on a piece of property at the Gateway. You recall, on property the city so, sold in the Gateway, we retained the right to repurchase in the event that property wasn't developed. This was actually the first, I understand, the first developed parcel in the Gateway. So they've obviously fulfilled that, and they'd like to clear title. So we have a release and termination of the right to repurchase on that piece of property.
Obviously, there's a building on that property, correct?
There is a building on that property now. Consumer Realty.
So we need a motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Make the second.
Yeah, Mr. Shacklet made the second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. LaLance.
For a number of months, and it's been a little while since we've talked about it, we've had some concern, some discussions about the Community Technology Center, which is a bookless library. We had a bid come in, it came in high. We, we had, I'm part of the committee, you know, the kind of the council liaison, and so, we wanted to take a couple of other looks to make sure that we were sort of covering our bases. Here's really, long story short, just to give you a quick refresher, you know, we're going to have a, you know, close to a two million dollar building, and our, sort of our end right now is four hundred thousand. It's costing us more because we didn't anticipate how high the bid was going to come in. We have, just our part of the new commitment would need to be two hundred thousand. We've tried several ways to get that down, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen without delaying this. And I know that Jim's been talking with him, too, but I think at this point, it'd be appropriate for us to just kind of go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and authorize an additional two hundred thousand towards our number for that particular project.
Second.
Okay, fine. Any discussion? Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. Any other business to come before the city council? I have one thing, just to make a note. May seventh at three P M, I saw Pastor Windrow at, M T S U had their first Board of Trustees meeting this Monday at two-thirty. So it was a historic day that M T S U had its own governing meeting of its trustees. The governor was here, so it was a really good meeting. But Saul Pastor Windrow, he was more than welcome on May the seventh at three P M for us to have our second, or I guess it'd be third, Councilman Smotherman, after the one, this will be our third town hall meeting for the southeast side of town. So, that will be May seventh, three P M, Olive Branch. That's one-one-one-five Minerva Drive. If you'll put that on your calendar. I think Ms. Gels Harris is, is.
Graduation.
Grad, graduation. So she's not going to be here, but.
And we're going to push that date out on social media to get good coverage?
Yeah, I think we just need to let Stephen Shirley know, and he'll make sure that everybody in that side of town knows about it, so. All right.
Hey, before you let everybody go, Happy Easter to everybody, and have a wonderful holiday weekend.
Amen. Amen. All right. With that, we'll stand adjourned.